Move into a moment of silent prayer, private reflection. Amen. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a need for a possible motion for an executive session?
I don't think we need one.
Seeing none, we'll move on to 2.1 and spotlights and recognition from our superintendent.
It's so exciting that there's so many people here for a school board meeting. Is there something exciting on the... So, I'm just kidding. You're here for your students. So, what I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna call the students up a grade at a time. And so, students, when I call your grade, if you'll stand up here and wait for everybody to come up here, and then after that, we'll take a picture and then we'll call the next grade. So, we are so excited to honor Lake Havasu Unified School District students who have achieved perfect scores on the Arizona Academic Standards Assessment, or scores in the 99th percentile on the ACT Aspire or ACT. These students' accomplishments underscore their dedication to academic excellence, reflect their hard-working commitment to their studies, and show LHUSD and their commitment to excellence. We are proud to recognize the following students for their achievement on the Arizona Academic Standards Assessment. So first, I'd like to call up students who had perfect scores in third-grade math. Joseph Fox. Riley Leonard. Maddox McKinney. Kennedy Trumbull. Charles Duran. Henry Mills. Levi Wilson. Ronan Premarathna. Brynlee Melcher. Holland Van Rin. So these are our third-grade students with perfect scores. We're gonna take an official picture. So for now, will everyone look at Gina, and then you can look at your parents. Let's give these students a round of applause. Students, as you go back to your seats, if it's okay with your family, there are cookies over there. Congratulations. Next, we have fourth-grade math. Chase Phillips. Lyric Hoffmeyer. Slade Spencer. We are also very excited, we have one student who scored perfectly in both English Language Arts and Math in the fourth grade, and that is Robin Partinus. So those are our fourth-grade students. We're gonna take an official picture. If you will look at Gina, please. Thank you so much, and then you may exit. Oh, sorry. Too fast. Next, we have fifth-grade math. That is Cannon Longstreet. And I'm gonna call up with fifth-grade, sixth-grade, a perfect score in both English Language Arts and Math, Hannah Vu. Very good. Congratulations. So now, we're gonna move all the way up to ninth grade. We are very proud to recognize the following ninth-grade students for their achievement in ACT Aspire. Colin Miller. Colin was in the 99th percentile of the ACT in his composite score, his ELA score, and his STEM score. Reese Ford. Reese had a perfect score in their composite score and STEM score. Wyatt Martin. Wyatt had a 99th percentile score in composite and STEM. So composite is all of it together, and STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. I'm sorry, I was just doing teacher speak. Adrian Meyer. Adrian scored in the 99th percentile in English Language Arts. Elise Kwan. Elise also scored in the 99th percentile for English Language Arts. Caleb Stilson. Caleb scored in the 99th percentile for STEM. So these are our ninth-grade students. Would you please give them all a round of applause, and would you smile for Gina? Thank you. You may also enjoy cookies. Nope, never too cool for cookies. So we are also very proud to recognize the following 11th-grade students for their achievements on the ACT. So the ACT, if you're not aware, this is the college entrance exam that is taken nationwide by many students at many schools, but also students who are applying for university. And these students scored in the 99th percentile of all the students nationwide. So our first student is Emily Blake. And Emily scored in the 99th percentile of math. Japan Patel. Japan scored in the 99th percentile in both math and writing. Maya Arand. Maya scored in the 99th percentile in both math and reading. Charles Butke. Charles scored in the 99th percentile for math and his composite score, but he also scored in the 100th percentile in both science and STEM. Timothy McElhaney. Timothy scored in the 99th percentile for reading. Lucas Ware. Lucas scored in the 99th percentile for science. Robert Minden. Robert scored in the 99th percentile for science. Cooper Greenwell. Cooper scored in the 99th percentile for writing. Kaia Lam. Kaia scored in the 99th percentile for writing. Felicity Mendoza. Felicity scored in the 99th percentile for writing. Nicole Wolf-Cone. Nicole scored in the 99th percentile for writing. Austin Erickson. Austin Erickson. Austin scored in the 99th percentile for writing, and finally Natalie Strater. Who also scored in the 99th percentile for writing. 11th graders' pictures. Thank you. Cookies? So many cookies. Cookies? So we know that these accomplishments are a collaborative effort involving educators, parents, and the community. We're excited to see how these students' determination will continue to positively impact their future endeavors, and their achievements are a point of pride for all of us. So congratulations to all of your students.
After all that hard work, why don't you have a cookie? Because you earned it.
All right, moving on to 2.2, we have the Lake Havasu City Education Association, and Carol Norakowski.
With everybody out there, don't feel like you have to stay through the entire meeting. We can pause a second.
Good evening, President Nierman, members of the board, Dr. Stone, directors, and community. Tonight, since it's August and it's the first of the school year, not fiscal year, but I figured I would take this time to introduce what the association is to those that may be new to this process. So for those of you who do not know who I am, I am Carol Norakowski, the current president of the Lake Havasu City Education Association. A quick summary of who we are. We are the local association, which is affiliated with the Arizona Education Association, and the National Education Association. Our local is a wall-to-wall association, which means it includes all staff. That means support staff, certified, and administrators. We advocate for our students, staff, and district. We work hard to continue our positive relationships with the governing board and our LHUSD directors. We reach out to our legislators and advocate for public education. During the legislative session, we keep our governing board, directors, and staff updated on critical legislative bills that will or can affect our local district and community. I'm always available for questions, comments, concerns, and look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on to 3.1, we have a couple calls to the public. We'll begin with Chef Chris.
Thank you. Our team of food service workers across the district share a pre-shift briefing every day where we go over any important facts of the day that we need to know about, and we always share gratitude. I have a thousand-word gratitude to read to you. Just kidding. They always say, start with a joke. Our gratitude today is the governing board. I've stood here many times in the past five years, and I've watched you work, and it's, I know, voluntary. I know, often thankless, sometimes brutal. And we appreciate you for all you do, for holding up a light to beauty, truth, knowledge, and wisdom for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for these kind words. Moving on, we have Colin Miller.
Hello, members of the board. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to take my request from the meeting in May into consideration for opening up the basketball courts at Starline. Before the meeting today, Dr. Stone talked to me and told me that not just Starline, but all the basketball courts at all the schools have been opened up. So I'd just like to say thank you. I have been using them over summer and a little bit at the start of the year, and I am very thankful that you took my request into consideration. Thank you.
Moving on to 4.1, do we have a vote for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 5.1, discussion, student achievement, LHHS graduate success report.
Each year, Arizona State University, in partnership with Helios Decision Center for Educational Excellence, reviews data from Arizona high school graduates about their successes in Arizona public universities and community colleges. Data was reported for students who graduated starting in 2017. Some of the major findings from this report show that our high school students, graduates, are excelling beyond students from other Arizona high schools and university and community college STEM. And again, that's science, technology, engineering, and math courses such as aeronautics, biology, chemistry, computer science, and math. Lake Havasu High School graduates are also more successful than students from other Arizona high schools in courses related to allied health, art, business, culinary arts, English, and history. Starting with the class of 2017, 1,092 LHHS graduates have taken at least one course at an Arizona community college, with the vast majority taking courses at Mojave Community College. Some of these students took community college courses while enrolled in Lake Havasu High School. Students have earned certificates in welding, HVAC, nursing, phlebotomy, auto collision repair, dental assistant, EMT, culinary arts corrections, fire science, entrepreneurship, criminal justice, and retail management. Starting with the class of 2017, 490 LHHS graduates have enrolled in either ASU, U of A, or NAU. While the report does not provide information about matriculation, it does provide data about success in classes. The report highlights that over 70% of Lake Havasu High School students have a GPA above the 3.0 level at the university. While this report does not provide data about students at private or out-of-state institutions, nor does it provide data about students who enter the workforce directly, it does provide some insight to the success rate of Lake Havasu High School students after they've graduated. And I've got a presentation that shows a little bit more in detail about what this data shows, and I apologize, it will be small because there's a lot of data. So just some background information. Helios collects this data along with Arizona State University. It was done, it was a $6.5 million grant that really developed this hub of information related to Arizona high schools. And so they did this for the following reasons. It is focused on workforce development. So are Arizona high schools producing adults that can have the skills and knowledge needed to go out into the workforce? It also informs policy. So based on the data that we're collecting, what policies need to be developed to support both higher education and K-12? It is there to support board members, local governments, and so they have an understanding to see their district's performance trends over time and compare them to peer districts. It supports school superintendents, so school superintendents can identify similar districts or districts that are maybe doing well in an area where they're not, and so they can network and grow all organizations more fully to serve students. It supports principals at the high school so that they're able to see, well, what really does happen to our students once they leave high school, and how can we support those outcomes? And it also supports communities so we can review progress. And so there's been a lot of talk about supporting, by the year 2030, the need for more post-secondary certificates and degrees, making sure the workforce is supported. And so how do we, as a community, how are we served by our schools? And so that was the reason for this. So this is done, and I realize that's very, very small, just so everybody is aware, anybody who has a school district login is able to pull this data. You just put in a request, and ASU will get back to you within 24 hours. So if anyone wants to look at this, or if you're not a school district employee and want to look at this with me, I'm happy to. And so I polled two years at university and two years at community college. I'll read to you, assuming that you may not be able to see all this. But I started with 2017. That is the first year that this report was available. So this has been available since then. For that graduating class, we had 100 students attend Arizona universities. So that does not include students who went out of state. That does not include students who went to private, maybe Grand Canyon University. So this is only looking at ASU, U of A, and NAU. At that time, so our 2017 grads, which are about, they're 24-ish now, 40 of them went to ASU, 40 of them went to NAU, and 16, sorry, I think that says 48. And then 16 went to the University of Arizona. 79 of those students, they brought in, they brought in community college credit with them. We can see one student that was on IEP, went to an Arizona college. And then what is interesting, these students hopefully have matriculated. So these students are of an age where they hopefully have matriculated, and so what we see is students with business management degrees, students with biomedical science degrees, health occupations, social sciences, communication, engineering. And so we can see the types of degrees that they are getting. It shows their GPA in the top right corner. We can see kind of a nice bell curve that is sloped a little bit with the most students having above a 3.0, and so we can see that. The bottom right is looking at ethnicity, and so we would hopefully want to see that our ethnicity looks like what our high school looks like at large, that all students have access to go to university. This is community college, and so these are students from the class of 2017 that went on to an Arizona community college. So this is not an out-of-state community college. This is not the military. This is not a trade school. All this is measuring is a state community college. We can see that 295 students have attended a community college. And so while I don't know the exact number, the exact class number of the class of 2017, probably roughly 400, maybe a little bit above 400, but we can see 300 of those have taken at least one class at a community college. There's information on financial aid. We can see that 17 of those students received special education services in high school. And then we can see at the top, there are their certificates, health professions, culinary science, liberal arts, business management, social sciences, and so thinking about the degrees, sorry, those are degrees awarded, so those would be associate's degrees, and then that is followed by certificates. Welding, fire science, emergency medical, cooking, so thinking about HVAC, so thinking about the trades that typically we see community colleges serve. And then you can see that the vast majority of students, or maybe you can't see, but you'll have to trust me, the vast majority of students attended Mojave Community College, but that is also followed by Arizona Western College, which is in the Parker and Yuma area, Mesa Community College, Rio Solado, and Pima. So this is going to be 2021. We do have data on 2022 graduates for university, but not for community college yet, and so I just kept it at 2021, so it's the same. So for this class, 77 have attended university, 51 of those brought in community college credits. It shows ASU, NAU, and U of A. We can see that the majority of our students are, attended NAU. We do see kind of a shift of students going from ASU to NAU, and some students going to U of A. And then these are their majors. So these students typically haven't matriculated yet, Bachelor of Science, Bachelor of Arts, nursing administration, and so you can see engineering is up there. And then again, I want to point out that nice kind of bell curve with the GPA that leans a little bit to the left, if it was rotated, with the majority of students in that 3.0 to 3.9 GPA, which is nice. That is what we want to see for our graduates. So 2021, this is community college. 170 students out of that class have entered community college. 44 of those received financial aid, five were special education. We can see degrees awarded, so they have, we see, I believe that says phlebotomist. So we can see that some of them are already starting to earn degrees, but we also, I'm sorry, those are certificates. We see certificates awarded. We haven't gotten degrees, they're usually, they're not quite two years out yet. And then again, we can see that Mojave Community College is the most enrolled at university, which is what we would expect. This is dual enrollment, and this is important. So this is thinking the number of students who are enrolled in at least one dual enrollment class. That's the total student. So 2015, 16, 212 students. So those students are quite a bit, almost a decade out of high school. But 212 students enrolled in a dual enrollment class with a total enrollment of 838 students. Students might be enrolled in a few classes. That number in 2122 is 194 with 514 enrollments. So we know that we are offering more AP classes. Since this time, we've stopped offering 7AMs. We were having students taking a lot of community college classes that I don't know is necessarily the best thing for juniors and seniors as they balance. But we still see a nice amount of students taking dual enrollment classes, and then there's the breakdown of their grades below. So these are benchmarks. This is really exciting information. This shows, if you can look at that middle row where it says enrolled 600... This shows, if you can look at that middle row where it says enrolled success percentage and Arizona average success, these are some numbers that we really do like to see. So in allied health dual enrollment, 96% of our students were successful, which is 3% higher than the rest of Arizona. Our 100% were successful, 5.9%. English, 97% successful, less than 1%. But, but those are good. Those plus numbers show that we're more successful, and the success is equivalent to ABC pass or an S. And so we can see that, that those students were successful there. This is this, kind of the same information, but these are, this is a three-year benchmark. So these are students who graduated from 19 to 21. This is a three-year benchmark, and this looks at community college enrollment. And so in this cohort, we have 860 students with a total number of enrollments, 3,614 courses. And so everything that has a plus, that is higher than the state average, everything that has a plus or, and is in green, that has an N count, I think it was 20, maybe 30, but has an N count that is big enough that they decided that it's statistically significant because of the number of students. And so we can see in almost everything that we are being successful. Some of the courses, anthropology, education. And so is this, the vast majority of these students are attending school at Mojave Community College, and so where we see discrepancies is this one instructor. But you can see that by and large, our students are doing very well at the community college. My favorite part of this data, even though I'm a history teacher by trade, is the success that our students are seeing in STEM classes. We know the importance of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, our future careers in the workforce, and we see in every single area, our students are doing better at community college in chemistry to calculus, college algebra, algebra to physics. And so that really is a testament to our, our teachers, and specifically our teachers from K through 12, who are teaching mathematics. We're also successful in career and technical education, automotive, building, culinary arts, again, thinking about this is our workforce. Finally, this is the university benchmark. So these are our students, 19 through 21, that are at the university. 296 students for a total number of enrollments and courses at just above 2,500. And so we can see in almost all courses, they're doing better than their state peers. Accounting, architecture, communication at the university level, education, geology. So we're really doing a great job supporting students in general studies. And then again, what I feel like is most impressive is how students are doing in STEM courses. In all of these areas, I think, but one, we are exceeding the state on how students are performing at our three state universities, and that just, that says a lot about our teachers. You can see there are some areas in language that we're not doing as well, and again, we don't offer those courses. I wish we would. But Spanish, we can see, we're above the state in Spanish with what we offer. And so again, a testament to both the community, families, students, and the education that students are getting that supports them for post-secondary opportunities. That is all.
Do we have any further discussion?
I just want to just point out a few things for everybody. Data like this is hard to get your hands on. We, I know as educators, data like this is gold. It's hard to find. You want to know how your students are doing. And getting this from, you know, you wish you could get the, the data from all your students everywhere on all the different programs, but getting this as a snapshot of how we're doing for the college transfer students is really kind of a neat thing to see. It really allows us to look at and say, hey, where are our strengths? Where, even if we have a few weaknesses. And I really appreciate what you guys are doing to dig deep and look for these, and also be accountable and tell the public how we're doing as well. So I, I really just am looking at this and going, wow. I, I think having our students doing better than the state average, when we get funded at well below the state average, is something to really be proud of our district at. Kudos.
I think it's commendable that we have such smart and dedicated students here on our district. And I just want to say, we also have students here that have invested in student success in our community, and I've had the privilege of working with Maya Arand in the last two years through a cooperative venture with ASU and the school district of the after-school tutoring program, which reaches out to students, grades four through 12, in math, science, social studies, and English. And Maya completed over 50 hours of volunteer service to help students. And I think that just tells you that our students don't just care about their own success as students, but they really do help and give back to our district. We're proud of you.
Moving on to 6.1, we have superintendent with the replacement student laptops and the ECF funds.
Mr. President, members of the board, as part of the continuing planned replacement of computers using emergency connectivity funds, the purchase of 1,254 Lenovo laptop computers in an amount not to exceed $488,500 will provide replacements for student laptop computers at all LHUSD elementary schools and Thunderbolt Middle School that have reached the end-of-life cycle. This is in line with the commitment to provide computers that meet current standards and keep up with changing needs. The computers will be configured and made ready for use by the LHUSD technology staff. The purchase will be made through DHE Computer Systems and is based on the contract that you see listed. This purchase has been reviewed and approved by the business department with funding from pre-approved emergency connectivity funds. What you will see on all of these agenda items from this point forward is that year-to-date computer purchases have exceeded the $100,000 annual cumulative purchase of like items and therefore require a governing board approval per the uniform system of financial records.
Do we have a motion or any discussion?
I move to approve 6.1.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yes.
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 6.2, superintendent for student laptops using bond funds.
In order to support elementary school students with access to online elements of adopted curriculum and amplify CKLE, ELA, and science, additional laptops are needed. The laptops will be funded through a bond fund issuance. These purchases will allow individual classrooms to have access to laptop carts rather than sharing across grades. The purchase of 96 Lenovo student laptops in an amount not to exceed 25,000 will be provided to the following schools in the following amounts. Thunderbolt, 32 laptops, Ora Grande, 32 laptops, and the replacement stock of 32 laptops. The computers will be configured and made ready for use by the LHUSD technology staff. The purchase will be made through Newegg Business based on the lowest quote pricing. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department with funding from the bond issuance.
Any motion or discussion?
I move that we receive it as presented.
I'll second it.
And these are the laptops that stay on site. These are not like the high school ones where they're taking them home.
Correct. These are in the laptop carts in classrooms.
Yes.
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 Yes. Quick question. Do we have enough Wi-Fi in our schools to handle those laptops?
We absolutely do. These are being added, but they're not being added in an amount that would, would overtake our Wi-Fi system.
Because the high school has a problem with that. We, we put out too many laptops at the high school.
So Mr. Baker is here, and I will let him answer a few questions.
Hi, guys. How are you? It's a good question, actually. Very good question. So kind of as if, as with most technology items, as we start to expand, we're going to bump, we're going to bump into little hiccups along the way. And so that is one of them, which is on a, on a daily basis going forward, we will see some pockets of concerns. So we'll always be tending to Wi-Fi issues going forward. Unfortunately, it's not a perfect system, although we attempt to make it as, as much as possible. So it's, it's a good question. The Wi-Fi system that's at the high school is aging. It's about five years old, but we're not quite ready to replace it yet. So our interim plan now is, is to simply restart the system periodically to chase out any issues that are there. So again, you know, it's probably not the right place to talk about, you know, the deeper troubleshooting portion of it, but just do know that we are aware that we do have pockets of issues, and we are constantly looking at those items. So as they're reported, we look at them and we tackle them immediately, so. On past couple of days, we did have some power outage-related issues that kind of caused the cascade of issues, and we also had a air conditioner that, that decided to go offline in the middle of the day. So that didn't help because things, when they get too hot in those server rooms, tend to, tend to turn off, so.
When do you think is the end of life for the current system?
The current system, we're, we're definitely there. I think probably within the next two years. The good news is that the majority of our E-rate funds have reloaded, so we have almost $1 million waiting for us to just simply spool up a project. But we do have to pay about 20% of any project that, that we decide to move forward with.
As someone who builds this for a living, we get about seven years out of a Wi-Fi system.
Yep.
That's normal.
It's usually once the technology starts to age out, or you start to have too many problems, like where the equipment itself is failing. But what we're seeing right now is typically, typically just a high amount of traffic, and so more traffic than we've ever seen before. And so according to the white papers, it can handle it. But in reality, you know, you don't know until you get there, so.
Some good growing pains.
Growing pains, exactly.
Ubiquity.
That's, that's where we're headed. We've, we've covered the rest of the district in ubiquity, so, yep.
Well, as long as, as long as you're standing there, thank you. You know, I have a couple of kids at the high school, and I know there's representatives from the high school administration, too. I was really impressed with the rollout and the distribution of the student laptops. I believe it was about 1,900 laptops that went out to students, and it was very, a very smooth process. I think the only hiccup on our end was the person actually distributing the laptops had to constantly prove that she was not a robot. But other than that, it went really smoothly.
Good, that's good feedback. It was a, it was definitely a combined effort. There's a lot of people that pulled together to make that happen, so, thank you, though. That's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the side? I'll, I'll wait here because I think she has two more, so.
One more.
Moving on to 6.3, we have the superintendent with replacement staff computers.
As part of the continuing planned replacement of computers using bond funds, the purchase of 40 staff desktop computers and 40 staff laptop computers in an amount not to exceed 52,000 will provide replacements for staff laptop computers and desktops at LHUSD that have reached the end-of-life cycle. This is in line with the commitment to provide computers that meet current standards and keep up with changing needs. The computers will be configured and made ready for use by the LHUSD technology staff. 40 Dell desktop computers will be purchased from Dell Technologies, and 40 Dell laptop computers will be purchased from Newegg Business based on lowest quote pricing. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department with funding from the bond issuance.
What are the computer specifications?
Ooh, how much time we got? I'm just teasing. For this particular one, we are looking at, these are desk, desktop computers for staff members, and the specs on it, if you, if you want to go that deep, these are Intel Core. These actually have processors that are called Intel, Intel Core, sorry, guys, I'm not used to doing this, 15, which is our 13th generation, which is the most current standard for processors. It's as of today, the most powerful processor that we'll put in place for our staff members, and it's by design, which is, we try to get the lowest price for the best performance. Big spending for the buck. That way they'll, they'll hopefully outlive, you know, their predecessors, basically. So some of the stuff in the past, we've had to buy on a, on a shoestring budget, and so today, we don't have a shoestring budget on purpose because we've planned for it. And by doing so, we're, we're planning to make sure that we have something that's in place well into the future, so.
I5 or I7?
These are I5s.
Good.
Yep. And if you're curious about core counts, they're six-core, eight, eight-thread, so pretty darn good. In terms of RAM and whatnot, it's 16 gigs RAM, DDR4, and the drives are a little bit smaller these days because most of the stuff we store is in the cloud, so 256 gigabytes, and they're upgradable down the road.
Those are solid-state drives?
Those are solid-state drives, yeah.
That's good, too.
I move we accept 6.3 as presented.
And I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.4, human resources. We have the approval of qualified evaluators for the 2023-2024 school year.
Mr. President, members of the board, each year we bring forward those, the following administrators and certified staff who have received the necessary training as required by ARS 15-537D and are delegated the authority to issue written preliminary notices of inadequacy of classroom performance as qualified evaluators for the 23-24 school year.
Do we have a motion or any discussion?
I move that we accept the list as presented.
I second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.5, business services. We have the architect services for Nautilus Elementary for the roof and weatherization design.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. The school district submitted a grant application to the Division of School Facilities, seeking funding to perform a roof and weatherization assessment at Nautilus Elementary. The DSF approved the application, provided funding, and the assessments were performed in fiscal year '23. The results of the assessment determined the condition of the roof and the weatherization factor for the exterior of the building to be in need of repair or replacement. As a result of the assessments, DSF recently approved additional funding for design work to be performed as the preparatory stage for creating architectural drawings and plans to be used should the DSF approve funding for construction. Once the design is complete, the project will go back to the DSF for them to consider funding for, for them to consider funding the construction phase of the project. Should the DSF approve funding, the project will come back before the governing board to approve construction. The amount designed, the awarded design amount is $108,121. EMC2 responded to a request for qualifications for architectural services issued by the district. A committee evaluated EMC2's qualifications, and the governing board approved EMC2's qualifications on June 20, 2017.
I move that we approve 6.5 as presented.
I'll second. Do we have a timeline, like once we receive, assuming that it passes to get the, the design, do we have a timeline for what that would look like? Is it maybe going to happen this year or during the school year?
We're hopeful that that'll happen. Right now, DSF, we just never know how quickly applications will actually move through the system. Sometimes they move through very quickly, other times it takes months. So design will probably take a couple of months before we actually submit it back to DSF for them to review. Hopefully though, hopefully though, later this year.
Just a reminder for the public watching, Division of School Facilities means this is not our money. This is a, it's a grant, so this is not coming from the local tax money. It's our, our team being very diligent about finding monies available that can help us through the, through the system and through finding grants.
Correct. It's coming, it's coming from the state.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.6, business services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Approval of vouchers and student activity funds as well as auxiliary funds for July of 2023 are before you tonight.
I move that we accept 6.6 as presented.
I second. I second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 7.1, we have our informational from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to congratulate all of our students who received their certificates tonight for having perfect scores. Also, as you looked at the data tonight, you can see our students are receiving an education and moving that forward as they go to community college or university, and they're getting amazing results. So very proud of the work that they're doing and very proud of our staff as they work so hard to prepare them moving forward. The start of school was very smooth and very positive as we went out to all the schools and saw the different things that are going on. So excited to, to be out there and walking through classes and seeing great things.
Moving on to 7.2, informational from our governing board members.
I just, I just want to echo what Dr. Stone was saying. There seems to be a bigger positive energy this year around all campuses. I think it's the exhaustion of COVID might be coming to an end. And everybody just seems, you know, is right in place. And it's just, you know, kudos to the team. It just seems like it's a really good start to the year.
Yeah, I got to participate in the teacher rally this year. And just seeing all the teachers excited to get with all the students was a real blessing. Another thing, I wanted to personally thank Andrea Foot and the Anderson Auto Group, Brian Francis, Shawn Michaels, and the local business owners who recently collaborated to help remodel the weight room at Lake Havasu High School. There was flooring, there was painting, there's new weight racks, there's exercise bikes, along with all, a bunch of other equipment that's been part of the new remodel. Approximately 400 students use the room daily, and it's awesome when LHHS graduates support our schools and give back so generously. I know I personally know a couple of the high school students that are absolutely in love with the weight room, so. Anybody else? And we have another call to the public. Any suggestions for future agenda items? Clarifying questions from the media? Then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Yes.
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 This meeting is adjourned.